Good afternoon. I hereby call this a special meeting of Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum is present and notice of this meeting was posted as required by Texas Open Meeting Act. Board member, Mr. James Mantoya, unable to attend today's meeting, please remember that the items do not have to be taken as it has been listed. Thank you for joining us and ask to turn your cell phones to the silent mode, please. At this portion of the meeting, we have publicly commented and I do not believe we have received any interest to address the board. However, those who are interested to address the board in the future, the instructions of how to sign up are included in the meeting notice, which is normally posted at least 72 hours in advance. First, our agenda today is a canvas of election returns. I, Fashid Nierulman, the Presiding Officer of Canvassing Authority of Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees, held on the third day of March of May 2025 in Nacogdoches County, Texas, do hereby certify that following is the total of all votes received by each individual -- or each candidate, actually. I further certify that the following votes total include early voting votes by district received under Section 87.1231 of Texas Election Code. For our large position, Mr. Damon Jackson, 136 votes; Ms. Cheryl D. Brady, 1,173 votes; Damon Ruckel, 1,053 votes; and District One Reverend James Irving was unopposed. At this portion, I ask a motion to approve the Canvas results and certify the announced election returns are true and correct for the May 3, 2025 Board of Trustees election.
I move to approve the Canvas results and certify the announced election results as true and correct for the May 3, 2025 Board of Trustees election.
Okay. Favor?
I second.
It's gone. Okay. Now, we will -- the board conduct executive close session. The board will now conduct executive close session.
We haven't voted.
Yeah, I just seconded.
You seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Was there any question? Motion approved.
The board will now conduct an executive--
We got to administer the oath.
No, this is on the hour's pages later. We go to executive session.
She has to be sworn in first.
She got to be sworn in.
I understand. On the pages four -- which one is, Ms. Add?
We're going to--
On the page number, on page four, and the five -- page five is sworn in.
Canvas, then we do the oath.
Page four, and page five.
Remember, we had the "Thank Kelly" picture.
Yeah.
Where is that page? We did that. Well, there it is. Hang on, we got it.
The "Thank Kelly" picture.
Yes.
After that is the executive session.
Correct.
Okay, good. Now, we will move back to organizing. At this time, we'd like to recognize Ms. Kelly Pittcock as she is finishing her term. Ms. Pittcock, we're going to present you a plaque which indicates, "In appreciation of your three years of service to the students of Nacogdoches ISD, by the word, indeed, your presence has enriched the minds of our students and served as an example for all of us." Congratulations.
Thank you.
But I personally have some comments to make.
Okay.
For myself and on behalf of my colleagues on NISD Board of Trustees, thank you for your commitment, your servant heart, your frankness, your inputs and wisdom, and wish you and your family good health and much joy and happiness as life goes on. I ask you, as often as possible, please pray for NISD Board of Trustees and all our students, administrators, staff, personnel, to be successful in our mission for fostering a bright future for those whom we are committed to and responsible for. Thank you, much love, and God bless.
Thank you.
At this round, Administration Board elected, Ms. Holly Anderson will now administer the oath of office for each elected candidate at the podium, in the order of, at large, Mrs. Cheryl Brady.
Come around the side. Put your hand on the bottle. Congratulations right there. Repeat after me, ma'am. I, Cheryl D. Brady, do solemnly affirm--
I, Cheryl D. Brady, do solemnly affirm--
-- that I will faithfully execute--
-- that I will faithfully execute--
-- the duties of the office--
-- the duties of the office--
-- of trustee-at-large--
-- of trustee-at-large--
-- of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees.
-- of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees.
-- of the state of Texas--
-- of the state of Texas.
-- and will, to the best of my ability--
-- and will, to the best of my ability--
-- preserve, protect, and defend--
-- preserve, protect, and defend--
-- the Constitution and laws--
-- the Constitution and laws--
-- of the United States--
-- of the United States--
-- and of this state--
-- and of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Take your seat.
Amen.
All right, let's go.
Thank you.
Seven.
Ready?
I, James eight Irving, do solemnly affirm--
I, James eight Irving, do solemnly affirm--
-- that I will faithfully execute--
-- that I will faithfully execute--
-- the duties of the office--
-- the duties of the office--
-- of trustee District One--
-- trustee District One--
-- of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees--
-- of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees--
-- of the state of Texas--
-- of the state of Texas--
-- and will, to the best of my ability--
-- and will, to the best of my ability--
-- preserve, protect, and defend--
-- serve, protect, and defend--
-- the Constitution and laws--
-- the Constitution and laws--
-- of the United States--
-- of the United States--
-- and of this state--
-- and of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay.
Reverend Irving, how many times have you done that?
Like this fourth, the fourth--
Oh, okay. I would have expected it to be memorized by now.
Okay. Welcome, Ms. Brady and Reverend James Irving. Thanks for coming back. And now, the board will conduct executive close sessions to discuss items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provision of Texas Open Meeting Act and as a law by Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as the result of discussions in closed session takes place after the board reconvenes into open session. Time now is 12:10. We should be back no earlier than 12:30. The floor is now open for nomination of a vice president.
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Reverend James Irvin for another term as vice president.
Okay. I personally second that. Raise your hand by...
No. Any other nominations?
Oh, by the way, any other nominations for that position?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to nominate Dr. Gromen to return to that position.
Okay, we have two nominations. Dr. Gromen and Reverend James Irvin. Okay. All... Witness. We have two nominations for vice president, all for Reverend Mr. Irvin Irvin. Raise your hands. Okay. Ms. Anderson, you're writing down. Ashut Nirmann, Mr. Mantoya, and Ms. Brady and Mindy. Okay. And of course, let's take the majority, therefore we do not follow up. Okay. The floor is now open for nomination for board secretary.
Mr. President, I nominate Lea Beth App for secretary of the board for this year.
Are there any more nominations? Are there any more nominations? If not, if I say no, basically we don't have any nominations anymore? Do you have nominations? All board members excluding Mr. Irvin, I'm sorry, Mr. Mantoya. Ms. Apt, you're sitting in my right hand, so all the writings would be your responsibility. Okay, with that said down, now we move on to. For this portion of our meeting, we will discuss items on a consent agenda. No action will be taken on any of those items at this board meeting. Okay, first item is the board meeting minutes. Are there any questions?
I have no questions.
No questions? Okay, next is business office report. Mr. Ben Everland, Chief Financial Officer.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, President Nirmann, board trustees, Dr. Myers. First off, we're going to start as we always do with our budget amendments. There's only one, and it is from moving funds from functions eleven and thirty-six or into functions eleven and thirty-six from function thirteen, so just a general movement between functions.
And the amount?
In the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Okay. I see item thirty-six says extracurricular activity increased ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight. Is it something that generated money through the playoffs or what?
No, sir. This is going to be moving from function thirteen to cover an expense in function thirty-six.
Donation under twenty-five hundred.
Yes, sir. We have quite a few this month. NHS received a hundred dollars from Stephen F. Puffer, P L L C, for Dragon S R T sponsorship, a hundred dollars from Wes Chandler for Dragon S R T sponsorship, two hundred dollars from Christ the Savior Orthodox Church for N J R O T C needs. Carpenter received two hundred dollars from the Nacogdoches J C's for attendance incentives. Reggae received hamburger patties and pulled pork from Knack Burger for faculty and staff luncheon, as well as cake from the Reggae Care Team for faculty and staff luncheon. B Q J received two hundred and fifty dollars from Michelle Klein to purchase books for the library. And Fredonia received school supplies and boxes from Bernice Wright with the American Association of University Women for Students in Need.
Thank you, sir, and I hope somebody had thanked those organizations. Okay, next is consideration of the board approve gift and donation over twenty-five hundred.
Yes, sir, over twenty-five hundred. N I S D received fifty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents from the Nacogdoches Education Foundation for our spring innovative grants. And NHS received twenty-five hundred dollars from Global Fiber Works LLC for a H O S A sponsorship. N I S D Police Department received five thousand dollars from the Nacogdoches Law Enforcement Foundation for training equipment.
That's great, thank you.
I'd just like to say that, is this just the second year that the education, or third? Anyway, they're doing great.
I think they're on the fourth.
Already the fourth, no.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a few years. The first year was very slow, but gosh, they have just.
They have just done great.
Tremendous job.
Yeah, and they have a end of the year banquet, which we missed, we the board missed this year, but I've been promised a program where they take the top twenty students and have them honor an educator who has influenced them the most. And it is so moving, and then they have all these people that are on the board for the Nacogdoches Education Foundation, and y'all are just doing a great job, and it's, I think it's really encouraging to the, to the classroom teachers that they are clearly seeing that they are appreciated, both monetarily, but in touching the lives of children. It's, it's a wonderful, I hated missing it.
I know.
The reason we missed, we were in love with interview, by the way, it's not that we ignored.
Yes, of course.
Okay. Next is investment report.
Yes, board, this is just going to be our standard investment report that we get every month. There's not been much movement. We, just to let you know, we still are tracking the interest rates and what the Fed is going to do with those, so just monitoring those and moving our money best where, where we can make money on it, so.
Good. Item next would be miscellaneous business office report.
Yes, it's going to be just our, our standard things, a bank rec, summary of revenues and expenditures, as well as the check registers by date and vendor. Also in your package, you'll see kind of what we did last month for the, the budget. I wanted to include that to let y'all know that we are still working on refining everything for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, so there should be an assumptions page on there and just noting some important House bills and Senate bills that we are looking at, and we're going to be responsive to if and when those bills either pass or fail. So just wanted y'all to have that information. Another important thing on that is there'll be a slight change from last month, but when we had our last board meeting, we approved all of those projects coming out of general fund, so I wanted to acknowledge those projects and that carryover into the next fiscal year so I didn't have to bring those back to the board for, as a budget amendment or anything like that.
So that's what the second page is.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, next item is purchase for fifty thousand. Ms. Dr. Curley?
Good afternoon, President Nirmann, board members, and interim superintendent, Dr. Myers. I'm presenting the purchase for over fifty thousand for the I X L learning platform. We have three campuses currently using this resource this year and other campuses that are interested. With this purchase, teachers and students in grades K through twelve will have access to the four core subject areas for tier two and tier three supplemental instruction. This I X L platform is, is approved by the state for meeting compliance with House Bill fourteen sixteen, and it's also an approved, it also has an approved assessment for teacher incentive allotment. In addition, it's aligned to the state standards and the state-approved open education resources. While the quote specifically states English Language Arts, Spanish Language Arts, and Mathematics, we will receive complimentary access for K twelve, Science and Social Studies. This afternoon, I'm asking the board to approve the purchase of I X L Learning for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for one hundred, four thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, you know, I'm going to have a few, although you answered one. I was wanting to know if it had been vetted by teachers, but we have, did you say three campuses that have been using it, and this is good?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And, okay, so that actually answers two. I went online and looked at it to see exactly what this does, and so if, if you, well, bear with me, let me just defend this huge expense.
Yes, ma'am.
So many people feel like teaching is just planning the lessons, and you have all these guidelines, that's hard, giving the lessons, and grading the papers. But a teacher's job never ends, and they have to figure out why a child is weak in some area, and why they keep missing this, and then how do we remediate? How do we go back and, and make them improve? And we need a lot of improvement, the district does, we'll all admit to that. My understanding is that this program is something that teachers can use with assessments that work into the curriculum, they're not just some random, you know, extra test to put in, to get data on how they are learning the different skills they're supposed to learn, and will also recognize for the teacher the weakness and give suggestions, am I right in that? That's what they claim to do.
Yes, ma'am.
Give suggestions on how to address it. Oh, that is huge, especially since we have so many teachers who have taught for five or less years. I mean, experience helps with that, but you're limited. So I just think this is great, but a lot, a lot of this data understanding and manipulation stuff is done in D Mac. So would you please just explain how this is an improvement and also needs to be done along with our D Mac?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Our data management system is housed in what's called D Mac, and that's organized by Region Seven Education Service Center. We store all of our data in that platform, from our state assessment data to our district-created assessment results, and then also our campuses have access where they can input their, let's say their unit test assessment results. The I X L learning platform has a diagnostic assessment that is for each content area, and based on those results, it assigns individual students to their own learning pathways.
That's great.
So they can be enriched, or they can be remediated, depending on what the results of that diagnostic assessment will be.
That's wonderful, and this is another claim that the website said that I thought was great. It said the student can be a part of that learning pathway, so it's like they're aware and they can track themselves, and that's like an extra gold star, you know, oh, look, I finally got, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. It helps them take accountability for their own personal growth and setting goals.
Yeah, good. Okay, well, that's a huge sum to swallow, but I think it's worth it.
Well, I wanted to segue into that, because the majority of these are, for the students, all of them are digital, and then for the teacher's guide, those are hard, hard copy. And so because we are a one-to-one district that allows us to do, to do that, and so if you could explain that to the people that are watching, that they can understand that, and then one other thing that I wanted to add into this, that's a nuts and bolts thing, is we ordered some textbooks earlier this, this spring, and just the transportation was twenty-two thousand dollars. So even though we're, we're investing this money in our students, we are saving because transportation costs are horrendous, and we've already invested in these computers or tablets for all the, all the students. So there is significant savings in having this digital and the access in the hands of the children, and they don't have to keep up with the book, they just keep up with their, their, their device. So if you want to just tell a little bit about that?
Sure. One of the big advantages that I see with digital access is that our teachers can monitor student progress in real time. And so if I have my students in a twenty-minute block, and they're, and they're working on their individual pathway, the teacher screen is going to show every student, and it's going to show if they're idle, because sometimes, you know, we just log in, it's going to show if they're going through too fast, like there's not enough time for you to read that question and problem set in thirty seconds, so they can go over at that point in time and offer one-on-one assistance to students that are struggling. And so that's one of the main advantages to having that real-time feedback and just-in-time intervention for our students.
And so the one-to-one means every student has their own device.
Yes, sir.
And we weren't that way when I started on this board. And so we've come a long way in order to carry out this, and, and it is quite expensive now to, to transport real books, correct?
Yes, sir. The management of print instructional materials has changed dramatically. We find ourselves right now coordinating with our district warehouse to pick up print materials that are out of date, so with digital access, that helps us stay current and up to date without having to physically maintain an inventory.
So these are additional advantages for the students and for just the nuts and bolts of getting things into the hands without being transported within our own district.
That's correct.
Even though we have a way to do that, it still takes a long time to get that because we're big, we have a lot of, lot of kids to, to have books for. So thanks so much.
Sir.
Thank you, Dr. Curley.
Sir.
Okay, next is.
Did you want to do the second portion of?
Teach T C I. T C I.
Okay. I'm presenting this purchase for teach C, uh, T C I from the Teachers Curriculum Institute. This was a request for high school social studies. This is a three-year quote that aligns to the state's instructional materials review and approval timeline for this specific subject area. It includes access to the five social study courses that are required for graduation at the high school level. These instructional materials are aligned to the state standards, and they provide interactive learning opportunities for our students. I'm asking the board to approve the purchase for teach T C I for three years at one hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is one of the reasons we're looking at this, are we supposed to be re, looking at new social studies curriculum, or is this, is this that, you know, how they rotate?
Yes, ma'am. So what the state called it is gap years, because we haven't had an adoption.
Thank you.
In quite a while, and so what this is helping us do is to stay up to date, and it helps our students make connections to current events. The state timeline to pilot an instructional material is twenty-nine thirty, and so this three-year quote will support us up until that point.
Okay, and they've kind of, the teachers have kind of tried this out a little bit?
Yeah. Yes, ma'am, they have experience in some of the, those subject areas, and they've expressed that they want this resource for the other specific content areas.
Okay, I realize I'm putting you on the spot, but, but the company will appreciate if you can remember any of this. Anything specific that the teachers said they liked about it?
Yes, ma'am. Making, making connections from a historical context to real-world events. They liked that it was inquiry-based, and it, it requires students maybe to watch a recording, a simulated recording of something that happened in the past, and then apply that knowledge to different types of projects that they can relate to. Just the, the real, real hands-on, interactive experience.
That's really good, because, you know, so much of complaints of heavy sigh teenagers is, you know, especially history, this is so boring, why do we care? And so if there's constant activities to make them take this knowledge and then apply it, then this is a great example of we are trying to share with our students what, what to think, not how to think, or maybe it's the other way around, how to think and not what to think. Thank you.
Please clarify that.
What?
How to think.
Yes, that's I did it backwards, not.
Anybody else want to speak?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm a nuts and bolts guy, and when we're looking at a hundred and forty thousand dollars that write at it, it, that looks expensive, but if we take and divide that by three years where we're getting a discount.
Yes, sir.
And then we divide it by the number of students that are utilizing this, this becomes a very affordable, economical, and the fact that we do it for three years, that means we don't have to do it again. It all downloads, it's there, all the students have it, and we have those licenses paid for, so, and again, there's no transportation. So all these things put the materials in the students' hands, and they can go at their speed to, some of them are going to be real excited about this, and they want to, I want to go ahead, I want to see this, well, let's peek at what's, what's going. And so I, I think that we're moving in the right direction in, in, in the fact that we're accumulating it, because you know what's going to happen in three years? It's going to be more expensive for the second year and the third year. We're getting a bulk price for three years, and, and so I really want to demonstrate appreciation for all. for all of you who are thinking in this way to make it the best for our students and the best for our budget.
Just as a point of clarification for the board, the funds for this come out of instructional materials allotment funds, which comes from the state. It's not local funds. So we're funding this through state instructional materials allotment.
Even better.
Even better.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Curly. Now we have memorandum of understanding with the Lamar State College in orange. Dr. Phil.
Thank you, President Nurman. Board of Trustees, Interim Superintendent Dr. Myers. Mr. Lucina and I are pleased to announce a MOU with Lamar State College, orange. You have heard us talk in various board meetings in the past about our new relationship with them and how we're going to be able to offer our CTE students free of charge in the following programs. We have health sciences, information technology, emergency medical technician, or EMT, criminal justice, construction, automotive, teaching and learning, or teaching and training, cosmetology, welding, animal sciences, as well as entrepreneurship. We have had a total of 15 teachers who have been credentialed by the Lamar institutions to teach these dual-credit courses for us in the fall semester. So we're very excited about this agreement.
That's great. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I got really confused because when we've been talking about this, I have, this is great. They're getting a dual-credit for CTE courses.
Yes, sir.
At Lamar.
Correct.
But when I was reading the, the enrollment agreement and all the other stuff, it made me wonder or suspect, then do our CTE students, if they are eligible, can they also get dual credit in other courses that they need to graduate if they're in this CTE program? Okay, let me give you an example. I'm taking criminal justice, and so I can get a lot of dual-credit courses through Lamar on criminal justice. Does this open up for me also that I can get dual-credit for my English requirements? Or, okay, good.
No. We still use SFA for our core content area courses.
Yeah, okay.
So that does not, we still have that agreement in place.
Okay.
So these are specific to those?
To those, yeah. Those programs of study.
Thank you. I couldn't come up with that word.
You bet.
Okay.
I had a question about cosmetology. Ms. Holland recently became certified as a barber instructor, and does, when we have cosmetology, does that fold in barbering, or is that a totally separate area? And is it into our, starting this coming year, or we have to wait a year? Because she just got that just a couple of months ago.
My understanding is it begins immediately, barbering is covered, but I would like to just look at Mr. Lucina and make sure that I am giving you the accurate information. Is that accurate, Mr. Lucina? May I have, President Nurman, may I ask Mr. Lucina to come to the microphone? Thank you, just to verify.
I was truly trying not to have to come up here, but good afternoon, President Nurman, school board members, Interim Superintendent Dr. Myers. We are really excited about this. So addressing barbering, so it is automatically in there? And then if we do have a secondary position, because that program is getting very large, that was my biggest concern, is how Mrs. Holland was going to do that, because her classes are packed anyway. We have so many young men and women who only want to do barbering. They don't want to do hair and nails or whatever. They just want to do barbering. And so the person that, you know, if we do have that position, we would look for them to get credentialed in the same one. And we have some people that we're looking at that graduated from here, that went, had the same teacher, Mrs. Holland, and was the only boy in cosmetology. So back, they didn't have barbering back then. So, you know, we're looking to the future to support this program, but everyone will get dual-credit because it is in cosmetology and barbering.
Great.
There's a number of men and women who said, I'm going to get my cosmetology certification, license, and then I'm going to become a barber. And the majority who went that pathway did not ever follow up because it costs so much money. And so the fact that we can offer this because of this sacrifice by this teacher and the fact that we're looking to get her help, this is going to be a game changer so that everybody can select what they need or what they want. And this produces money for them as soon as they grab, actually, as soon as they get their license. So again, this is really, really good work in the CTE department, and this is going to count for our numbers and reimbursements.
Any more questions? Thank you, sir. Dr. Hill, we have memorandum of understanding with Lamar Institute of Technology at Port Arthur.
Yes, sir. Thank you, President Nurman. Board of Trustees, Interim Superintendent Dr. Myers. This is a second MOU that we have with Port Arthur. This is specifically for our culinary arts program where we will have two teachers that are credentialed. And I failed to mention on the previous one, as well as this one, we did have the Fisher firm look over both of these MOUs.
Good.
Any more questions? Comment? Thank you. And finally, reschedule in July, 2025 agenda review and a regular board meeting. Interim Superintendent Dr. Myers.
As far as the agenda for review and a regular meeting in July, it seems to fall in an awkward spot, so we're asking that the board postpone it for one week, just because of July the 4th and so forth and so on. So just moving the board meeting essentially back one week.
Okay. I'm sure it will be on the calendar for communications.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Now we have one item on a discussion action portion of agenda, which is first reading of revised local policy DC employment practice.
Yes, sir. This item's on the agenda due to the petition of the board officers to take a look at this and revising DC local policy, which essentially is a policy that outlines contracts and who has the authority to extend or offer contracts within the district. The policy that you have in your packet is a revised policy that essentially the board retains the power to offer and review administrator contracts, as well as contracts that were held by dual assignment employees, and gives the authority to the superintendent to employ teachers and non-contractual employees. So I offer this to you for first reading this week.
Am I correct that superintendent could nominate and the board reviews that? Am I correct?
That's the way I read it.
That's correct. The superintendent is for as offering contracts to you, nominates or recommends contracts to the board, and then the board acts on his recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
Or her recommendation, excuse me.
Politically correct. Okay. With that said, the board now goes back to closed session. The board will now conduct executive closed session to discuss items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provision of Texas Open Meeting Act and allowed by Texas Government Code Section 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, 551.076, 551.219. No voting will take place in a closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions, closed meeting, takes place after the board reconvenes into open session. And time is now, Reverend, what's that?
1:04.
1:04. My watch is always one minute different with the...
Board is now reconvening into open session. I believe it's time 1:52. Am I correct, Remner?
Um, 1:52.
Yeah, I intentionally say one minute back. So, board, do you have any agenda for future? Okay, make a motion.
I move that we adjourn. I second.
All in favor and give my same eye.
Aye!
Opposed? We adjourn.